I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Branquist.
Here.
Arms.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Weevilhouse.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Boston.
Here.
Hildebrand.
Here.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
I would then look for a motion to approve the full agenda with this change, the removal of items number 29 and 30.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Motion second. If no discussion, please vote. Have we all voted?
Yeah. Okay, I believe that was mistaken. All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay, that takes us to item number 27 on the council agenda under special presentations. And we will now have a presentation by the Lower Elkhorn Natural Resources District of a grant check for the River Point Square Project. And joining us, I see, is Mr. Scott McHenry, a board member of the Lower Elkhorn Natural Resources District.
Hello. I won't take too much of your time tonight, but yeah, my name is Scott McHenry. I'm a director on the Lower Elkhorn Natural Resources District. And on behalf of the board and staff, I'd like to congratulate you on the River Point Square Project, or River Point, yeah, Square. I keep on mixing it up with the redevelopment terms, so. Anyway, I will say personally, my family and I, we've actually gone to three or four of the farmers markets this summer and enjoyed it. My daughters like to run over there and make some music on the music bars and everything, so we enjoy your project. The Lower Elkhorn works with people across our 15 county districts. And we provide funding for a wide variety of projects. And this is just kind of one area where we go. This is our recreation area development program. And so tonight, I'll be presenting a check for $29,941.68. And we also have a sign to go with that. I don't know.
Very good. I'll join you in a minute for a photo with that, Scott. But I did want to say we very much appreciate the partnership that we have with the Lower Elkhorn NRD, not only on this project, but many other projects that we're partnering on.
Correct. Yeah, we've done stuff with trees in the past, and a big one coming up on that riverfront project.
Absolutely.
So we're happy for that. And we also love working with the city of Norfolk, so we hope that continues in the future.
Appreciate that. And I think River Point Square has come out nicely and, as you mentioned, is now the home of the Norfolk Farmers Market. And that space was specifically designed for those types of ongoing community, public markets and festivals. So all in all, a good partnership produced a good outcome, so.
Yep, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, next, item number 28. I'd like to call Police Chief Don Miller forward for recognition of the life and service of Officer James Heller.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to take a moment to recommend, to recognize Officer Jim Heller. And we have several of our officers that are here to show their respect for him. Jim Heller was a staple with Norfolk Police Division for literally decades. He spent 33 and a half years serving the community of Norfolk. And during that timeframe, he had a deep, deep love for both the community, his family and his fellow workers. And about halfway through his career, he was diagnosed with serious cancer. And he went through treatments, chemo, radiation surgeries, and worked his way back to work. And his dedication to his work was only second to his dedication to his family. He was a very strong family man, loved his wife and kids dearly and his grandkids. And that's what kept on driving him to get back to work. And he spent, of those, once he did get back to work, you know, he worked for several years before the cancer came back again. And he actually had three separate bouts with major cancers. And each time he fought his way back to work because he loved serving the community, just like the rest of our officers do. And despite the challenges of the job, he loved the people, he loved the work, he loved helping people when they were struggling. And I visited with his, with his wife, and she wanted to be here today, but it's still a bit too soon. But they wanted to thank the council and the mayor for the opportunity to recognize Officer Jim Heller. Like I say, he was a true family man, and he was a dedicated police officer, second only to his family. We'll never know the true effects of his work because one of his main things that he did for years was a training officer. In fact, he was one of my training officers 31 years ago. And we never know that, we tried to figure out how many officers he's trained over the years, and we lost count. I don't even, I don't even know. But, but his, his ability to do the job and train other officers carried forward, and will continue to carry forward for more decades because we just don't know how that, how that affected the rest of us. So we appreciate this opportunity, and the family thanks you for the opportunity to recognize Jim Heller. He started in 1986, and he retired in 2019, not because he wanted to, but because that was, the surgeries that he had to go through for the cancer prevented him from being effective at his job. And he recognized if he can't stay effective, that it's time to step aside. And then, of course, June 25th of this year, he lost his life due to the cancer. So thanks for the opportunity. He's a great man. I will remember you. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
I could say I didn't know him personally, but it was clear in conversations with people throughout the community who did that he had a great and lasting impact on those that, those officers that he trained and those that he served in Norfolk for decades. So we honor and recognize his life and service. And if we, if we could, I know this, we did this at top, but if we could just rise for a moment, for a moment of silence in his honor. Thank you. Okay. We now move on to the public hearings and related action portion of the council agenda. Item number 31, I will open this public hearing to consider the amendment to the redevelopment plan for the Legacy Bend Redevelopment Area for Phase 3 of the Legacy Bend Redevelopment Project. And to open the public hearing, I'll ask Randy Gates, our City Finance Officer, for some background on this item, please.
Yes, Your Honor. On June 7th, 2021, the Community Development Agency accepted the amendment to the redevelopment plan for Phase 3 of Legacy Bend and forwarded it to the Planning Commission for Recommendation. On June 22nd, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on the proposed plan amendment and voted 7 to 0 to recommend approval. On July 6th, the agency approved Resolution 2021-3 recommending approval of the plan amendment to the City Council. This resolution is included in the Agenda Pack. The redevelopment plan for the Legacy Bend Redevelopment Area was approved by the City Council on January 16th, 2018 and provides for redevelopment of the Legacy Bend area in multiple phases, with each phase requiring an amendment to the plan. On October 15th, 2018, the City Council approved the Phase 2 plan amendment. This Phase 3 amendment consists of approximately 64 multifamily dwelling and townhome units. Total cost for the developing Phase 3 is almost $7.6 million. The project is expected to generate over $2.2 million of incremental taxes, so $41,736,058 with tax increment financing. I'd answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Any questions on that background? Okay, this is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now. Okay. Seeing no one, I will move to close the hearing and move on to item number 32. Would entertain a motion to consider Resolution Number 2021-25 approving the amendment to the redevelopment plan for the Legacy Bend Redevelopment Area, Phase 3 of the Legacy Bend Redevelopment Project.
I'll offer for consideration Resolution 2021-25.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion on this, council, or questions? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2021-25 is adopted.
Takes us to our regular agenda, and item number 33. Would look for a motion to consider approval of ratification of a contract with Perry Reed Construction for the Norfolk Transfer Station Site Improvements Project for an amount of $4.35 million.
I'll make a motion for consideration. Second.
Motion in second, and for some background on this, Steve Ramis, our Public Works Director.
Mayor and Council. Previously, we had bid the transfer station project and brought that to you for award. That was in May. That was passed by council. It was a function of negotiating or getting the contract signed and follow-up conversation with the low bidder, Perry Reed. They wanted to be sure that there was language in the contract relative to force majeure related to supply chain issues and escalation of costs within the supply chain. Our contract, our standard contract, pretty straightforward contract. In those conversations, they came back and wanted to add the language that's in paragraph 5 of the contract, which basically is the long form of spelling out force majeure, again, related to price issues within the supply chain that are beyond their control. So we did bring this conversation to a subcommittee, the Public Infrastructure Subcommittee back on July 1st as well, just to bring them up to speed on where we were with getting the contract signed. Both parties have executed the contract. One of the things that we pressed pretty hard on was that we were not going to enter a conversation around any supply chain issues or cost escalation until such time as we had an actual contract approved. So there were four, five bidders on that project. Perry Reed was at 4.3. The other four bidders were in that 4-point, varied from about 4.9 to 5.1. It is my understanding, in working with Perry Reed, that the number that is generally being circled around is, is a fraction of that difference and would not put us anywhere close to, to the second low.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any questions or comments on that from the council?
How is that process monitored? So we don't end up...
The process going forward would be they would need to share with us any documentation related to their initial bids and any documentation from their suppliers related to any cost escalation. And then we would enter, enter a conversation about some change order relative to those, those actual changes from their suppliers. We've also indicated that we wouldn't stick a shovel on the ground until we've moved through that conversation and had an actual change order approved.
But there's no, there's no percentage or no, how is it justified whether that's, that should be included in a cost increase or not, if that makes sense? What tells us that?
Ultimately, that's what they have to prove to us, is that it's truly force majeure and not just artificial price escalation within, within the supply chain. And so ultimately, we'll have to, you know, we as staff will work on that and bring that back to council for, for discussion and approval.
Not quite sure. This looks for a bidding process. I wasn't on the subcommittee, but as looking at it, perhaps...
This is, you know, the issues out there right now in supply chain, specifically around steel packages, are significant. I'm aware of multiple projects right now that are in this very discussion on this very issue.
Yeah, which, but when this was put out to bid, there was, there were price increases at that time. They were escalating at that time. So I'm wondering if your other bidders kept that in mind and had their prices set about $600,000 more.
I would say...
And now we're getting in a situation where these guys could come back and go...
I would say that's not the case. I mean, like, without sitting down with those bidders, but...
Yeah.
Again, the dollars that we're generally talking about wouldn't put you anywhere near the second low.
Well, what guarantees that?
The change order that we'll approve prior to starting work.
And if we don't approve the change order, then what?
It'll be a different conversation. We walk away.
Okay, that's...
So what they, what they, what they've done by signing the agreement is they have secured, basically secured their bid bond, so.
That should have been on May 17th, the day they awarded it, right?
Correct.
Any other discussion? Questions, council?
So you said if there was a difference, it would be a fraction? And can you further define what that fraction is supposed to be, or you would think it would be?
Right now, the number that's been shared with me is somewhere between 95 and 105. That was with the majority of their subcontracts in.
Any further questions? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
It takes us to item number 34. Would look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5742 amending Section 26-3 of the City Code related to water emergency restriction.
I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance number 5742.
Motion in second. For some background on this, we'll hear from Dennis Watts, our City Water Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Sign in real quick here. Okay, I'll talk, I'll kind of walk through, spend just a few minutes because there's quite a bit in here. So what we're doing is, we've always had water restriction on the books. Last one was a code change, it was in 1988, so this is kind of updating it. What we're doing is we're trying to base it, you know, say, the need for water restriction more on objective data instead of, you know, just kind of, so we actually have some parameters in here. And we'll say, and I believe it was in 1978, they said we wash, did a water restriction for a very brief period of time. So we, it's this, we don't anticipate this happening a whole lot. But again, so 1978, it was a very brief period of time. Anyway, we kind of want to be on the front end and, you know, being, being prepared to make the right decision. And so we're going to base it off of objective data. So if you look at the very first, you know, what we're going to base that, those decisions on, so I'll kind of walk through here in a minute. We're going to base it on static water levels, MGDA, million gallon of water used a day. We're going to look at, you know, the time of the year, weather forecast, previous rainfall, temperature. So we want to look at a whole bunch of different data if we make the, the right decision, if it's needed. So I don't know if you guys read that, there's, you know, that's kind of basic what that first paragraph says. So we're looking at three different phases. One would be a moderate shortage. That's if the well-filled static water levels are greater than 16 feet and also greater than 10 million gallons a day of water usage. And then there's other circumstances also, and these isn't kind of all of them, but, you know, again, looking at, you know, the, you know, previous rainfall, weather forecasts, things like that. So the first one, a moderate, that would be basically just, we're going to ask for a voluntary decline in, in water usage. Basically, and our, you know, main water is, is lawn watering. Wintertime, we're about 3.2 million gallons a day. Summertime, early this year, we jumped up to about 9.2 or so. We're still in good shape. But, you know, starting to get some rains, we dropped back down to, you know, about six and a half to seven. Anyway, so we're going to ask for a voluntary decline on just a, if we think there's a moderate shortage. A severe shortage would be basically if our water levels are greater than 17 and greater use than 10 million gallons a day. And again, that doesn't mean we'll automatically do it, but we'd be in conversation with Steve, Steve Ramis, on what we think we should do. Again, I don't anticipate it, but we want to be on the front, the front end here. What the severe shortage would do is, basically what it would do is we'd have a mandatory decline of water usage on lawn, excuse me, on lawn irrigation, and it'd be at two days a week instead of the current three that we have. And the, probably the key here is we say that you must limit, like, say, the even numbers, 02, 4, 6 and 8. They must limit their water use to Wednesdays and Fridays. And in about March or Aprils, when we came to you guys, and we said we should try to, you know, have people water, you know, even on the, you know, Wednesday, Friday, Sunday and the odd. So that would be a change there that we would say must. And that was currently in the 1988 code. You know, that they must do that. So we did have that. Now, one I want to point out, because it's kind of a main one here, is there's, we do have some exemptions though. Let's walk through those quick. We do have Rec, the Parks and Rec Department, we do have an exemption for them. Out at Tahoe and that with the, you know, the, all the supports that go on in there. If we cut that watering down major, it's going to, it'll ruin the ball fields, things like that, very expensive. So we did have those as exemption. Also handheld container, containers for indoor and outdoor watering. And then we did have for new sod slash seeding, things like that. And so if you have sod seeded areas installed less than 30 days prior to severe shortage declaration, you could obtain a permit at no cost. That'd be posted in the window or posted on the site because, again, you know, there's a pretty big cost there if it's a new seed, new sod, things like that. So we did have that as exemption. Lastly, we had the Phase 3 at critical shortage, and, and this is, I mean, this would, you know, this is a very major one. So critical would be basically no lawn irrigation, no lawn watering, and limited outdoor. We did keep those same exemptions in. As I said, you know, it's, it's a big loss if we lose that, you know, those park grasses, things like that. And that our major usage is lawn irrigation. So in a critical situation where we're looking, you know, drinking water, no drinking water, different things like that, that's what that would be for. And then the other one we have in there on the last paragraph, page 3, is basically just the event of a natural disaster or failure of a water system. And that's currently in, that was in our 1988 code also, where the mayor would be able to, city administrator, excuse me, not mayor, city administrator, or his authorized representative would be able to declare that. And that, you know, that could be, say, you know, our 24-inch water main that comes in from the West Plant. If that were to break, or we had a tornado hits one of the facilities or something like that, it'd be a, something catastrophic. So we do have that in there. And then the last item on there is we do have a penalty for violation. That's currently, that was in our current 1988 code also. Again, we're just trying to be prepared, you know, if things do, you know, something would happen. And so that's why we're coming to you guys to, I guess, get your thoughts on this. But that's, that's what we're planning to do, so we're ahead of the game if need be. We did it, like I said, in 1978. So it's very rare, and we just want to be on the front end. So we're not trying to scramble and come up with something, you know, if something happens. Hope that kind of answers a little bit, but any questions?
Oh, thank you, Dennis. I know this was quite a bit of work to put into place, and I appreciate your diligence in doing that. To me, this is only prudent to have a framework in place that promotes conservation and preservation of the resource when it's necessary. So I think this is a very reasonable measure.
Just to be clear, on the severe shortage, yeah, there's four events, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, private water.
Yes.
They're exempt. On the critical shortage, there's three exemptions. Number four also apply to the critical?
Yes, that would be on anybody not in our water system, which the private. We could, yeah, we probably should have that in there also. So basically, we could probably, I guess, are we able to add that last section in there?
If we can, somebody make an amendment or a motion to amend that, to include that in that last section.
And basically what you're saying on, what you're saying is on that last one, we'd also include the public, private water supplies would be exempt also. Okay. That's totally good. If we could get a vote to amend that?
Okay, yeah, so.
So let's state it again, so we're all clear on what we're voting on, if you want to make the motion.
I would like to make a motion at this time to add number four, the exemption of private water supplies be added to the critical shortage section of this document.
Second.
Okay, motion in second on the amendment. Any discussion, council, on that? How many private water supplies are left in the city, approximately?
There's, I mean, it'd be a very, very small percentage, but there are some, we'll have some out, you know, south of town that, you know, we got, we have the water main out there now, but there'd be some of them there. We have probably some out in the bluff, Grove areas. Not very many at all, but there is some definitely out there. Maybe a quarter of a percent or something, it'd be very, very minimal.
Does that include the people who've got the, maybe they're hooked up to our water, but they've got the backyard pumps?
If it's...
You've got neighborhoods like that.
Yeah. If it's not connected to our water system, the lawn watering, then they would be exempt.
And that's what that verbiage in here applies to.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Any further questions on the underlying provision or discussion?
Can we suspend? I mean, we voted for everything, right?
Yeah. Well, that was just, that was just the amendment.
That was the amendment, so we're back, we're back to, we're back to discussion on, on consideration. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. Short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend Section 26-3 of the official City Code related to water emergency restriction, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5742 carries on first reading.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I move that we suspend the rules and pass on second and third since we're kind of in that season with the water.
Motion in a second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5742 carries on second and third.
Takes us to item number 35. I would look for a motion to consider approval of an engineering design services contract with JEO Consulting Group Incorporated for the Johnson Park Final Design Project for an amount not to exceed $285,402.
I'll make the motion for consideration. Second.
Motion in second, and Steve Ramis, could you give us some background on this, please?
Mayor and Council. Before you is the contract amendment to JEO's design contract for the Johnson Park improvements related to the overall Johnson Park project. The project includes the First Street Bridge replacement, as well as the river improvements, in-channel river improvements. Those, both of those projects have already been final, final contracts approved for those. This, this design contract here would include several areas within the upper park area. This, this design contract here would include several areas within the Upper Park area, the picnic area improvements, the amphitheater improvements, pedestrian bridge, lower park walks and trails, upper park walks and trails, grading and storm sewer, on-street parking on Prospect as well as Oak, and the water feature on the north side of the park. So that's what this is. We are still waiting for the four oh four permit, and I've kind of been holding on this to get that four oh four permit in my hand. The last contact with the Army Corps for, Army Corps of Engineers office here was about two weeks ago, again, indicating that, you know, we have a green light on the project. They just need to get the permit written and get it to us. It's been the same message now for a couple, two, three, four months, but it hasn't changed. So we do, you know, the desire here is to get the overall project bid out early fall so that we can start to prep for and give, have appropriate lead time in there on the river project and the bridge project for a January start of construction on the project. The specific components of this that we would anticipate being in that are some of those park or walks and trails that are more specifically down along the river, providing the river access and trail access along the river. So we, we do, we're at a point here where we really can't wait too much longer and stay on schedule for the project.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any questions, council?
I would also note the four oh two was issued by the state back in early May, and that was kind of the last box that needed to be checked by the Corps of Engineers for issuing that permit.
Four oh one?
Yeah, or four oh one, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay. Does this contract include the amphitheater?
It does.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion, council, questions, comments? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay. With that, that concludes this meeting in the Norfolk City Council. We are adjourned.